I'll move to approve.
Before you do, what happens when?
You go ahead and get a motion, then if you have any scrum.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, sorry.
Just need a second.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so are there any additions or corrections? I did have one small one myself, and then also one that was submitted by one of our participant, community participants, and it was really just a context thing, something I said in the third paragraph near the end of the second page. It was supposed to be against any changes to the current front yard fence allowance, because right now we allow three feet and four and a half feet. It wasn't saying no front yard fence, it was saying don't go up to six feet on the sidewalk.
So any modifications existing?
Right, exactly, so that was what it was supposed to read, and I may not have articulated that clearly enough, but I just wanted to go on record as that being what I meant to say if I didn't say it exactly, if it didn't come across that way. And then also, there's a slight change in Ms. Severs', let's see, I've got to find out where it is in the, it was when we had public comment under the shared readings discussion, and I'm trying to find this, okay, so the second to last paragraph on the last page, that if you go down to where it says, she pointed out examples in the article such as the importance of trees providing shade, processing carbon, and preventing evaporation. She hopes that would read as a period, and then this also works with this commission's conversations about ADUs. She primarily wanted to take out the but because it didn't reflect what she felt, which is she's actually in support of ADUs, so I hope that is okay with everybody. Is there any other additions or corrections? And I can give you these in. Oh, do you, okay. So I guess we have a motion on the floor, a vote, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
With all those scripts.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Okay.
I was missing.
Nels abstains?
I missed your dramatically exciting discussion.
Okay, so I guess this goes to staff, and is there any correspondence that you wanted to bring?
Nothing from staff this evening.
Okay. Item number four, Transportation Commission meeting report.
That's simple, the last meeting, I reported on the Transportation Commission meeting on the seventh of this month. The next meeting is not scheduled until, I believe, the 11th of September, and I haven't seen an agenda yet.
So I guess we'll move on to item five, and for those of you in the audience, this is open microphone time. It's, members of the public may speak to the commission regarding matters not on the agenda tonight, or not currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you would like to speak, please come up and state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to three minutes. Do I have anyone wishing to come forward from the public to speak to the commission about any items? I guess not, okay. So now we move on to item six, we're just whizzing through this agenda today.
That's great. You ought to be the chair all the time.
I've been accused of running through an agenda.
You'd get a special award if we'd go home by eight.
About 7:15. No, just kidding. Okay, so Bill Belknap's going to present a review of the draft fence skater amendments.
So as you may recall, we, at the last meeting, we looked at three different possible legislative code amendments, one related to fence standards, a second related to street frontage, and the third related to residential allowance in the commercial districts at our last meeting. And so we committed to getting a draft ordinance together on the first two for this meeting for the commission's review. This first one then addressed the fence standards, as you recall, that was a conversation about fence heights and their allowances in the street side yard areas. Currently, in most all districts, they are limited to no higher than three feet if it's a solid fence, or four and a half feet if it's an open fence, if it's located within the street side yard area. The same limitations are in place in the front yard area, and the council then approached a public comment, and Pat was also in attendance at the last meeting, Pat O'Connell, to provide comments about some of the hardships that have been placed on some properties and the ability to get private rear yards on corner lots. So this is a first draft of an amendment. There is a lot of, a lot of strikeout language, because we actually have fence standards and fence language within each of the individual zoning districts. So the proposal was to actually, and as you went through, and as I looked through some of these, some of the language had changed kind of over time in different areas, that's kind of the problem, when you have the same subject matter being addressed in multiple different locations, is you kind of lose continuity and consistency in some of the language. So this would essentially strike out all of the language that exists within any of the individual zoning districts, so the first four and a half pages or so are addressing that, so it's really nothing more than deleting those sections. And then, beginning on page five, section 14 would begin with the new language. Essentially, it would reinforce that permits are required for fences, and that they must comply with the following standards. Maximum height allowances would be six feet, except fences located on school grounds, public parks, and public utility facilities, and so that's consistent with what is allowed today. There is also a section that would allow, in the industrial district, fences to be allowed up to eight feet in height, which is the current standard, so it's just kind of relocating that language there. Section two then gets into the residential districts from FRSR, R1, R2, R3, R4, RO, and neighborhood business, and would introduce the height limitations within the front yard areas, so section two A states that fences constructed within the required front yard shall not exceed three feet for solid and four feet six inches for open fences, where the posted materials constitute not more than 60% of the fence area. Item number B then would address the street side yard areas, and state that there, that if they are over three feet in height through a six foot fence, or over four and a half feet for an open fence, that they need to be set back two feet from adjacent public sidewalks, or seven feet from the back of the curb if no sidewalk exists. So this would, that limitation in fence heights would not, for street side yard areas does not apply in A. In B, if you're going to have a three foot solid, it actually could go up to the walk, because it's not a very tall fence that would be adjacent to the walk, but if you would exceed the three feet height or four and a half for the open, then that two foot setback would kick in, and that's kind of the discussion we had regarding snow removal, maintenance, general pedestrian, and crowding in the sidewalk area. If they stay at that lower height, currently, there is no limitation, or no required separation from the sidewalk, so I didn't want to impose that if there were existing, and make them essentially fall into a nonconforming status. So if we didn't just have a blanket two foot separation, then we don't create that, those nonconformities. And then, the primary concern was when they start to get to be fairly tall fences and solids, and side of security fences, that that setback would need to be, need to occur. So that would address that element. Section C is an existing language that talks about solid fences when placed within five feet of a tall retaining wall, that essentially, the height of the fence has to be reduced by half of the elevation of the retaining wall, and that's just to try to prevent a situation where an adjacent property could build a five or six foot hall high retaining wall, and then place a five, six foot tall fence on top of that, and now all of a sudden you have an 11 foot tall wall right at the property line. So it does help kind of mitigate a little bit of that combination of height. There are some existing sections, unique standards in the UMC district that apply to fences, and so those got carried over into this section as well, and so that's item number three. And then, item number four is the discussion we had about fences in the vision triangle at street intersections, so this would limit fences to no more than three feet in height where they're located within the street intersection of the triangle. It's formed by a right ossosceles triangle having sides of 40 feet measured along the curb line of each intersecting street, and that's just the statutory vision triangle that's in state code as well, and that just would limit those heights in the vision triangle. Item number five is just a statement that any fence proposed to be located within the public right of way would require the approval of an encroachment permit, and there may be situations, especially in older neighborhoods, where you have an 80 foot wide right of ways, where the property line is up near the building, essentially the right of way line is near the building wall, that there may wish, the owner may wish to have a fence in the right of way, and just stating that would require an encroachment permit. And then the last item was regarding barbed wire fences and others. Generally, those are prohibited in most all of the zoning districts with the exception of the industrial district, so this states that barbed wire fences or other fences constructed in a manner that may be hazardous to persons or animals are prohibited in all zoning districts except for the industrial district. And within the industrial district, the barbed wire portion must be located no less than six feet above ground level, and that is the current standard that we have today, so that's just carrying that over into item number six. So this would remove all the standards, consolidate them in one location, we'd have better standardization of language, and then it would remove that height limitation in the street side yard areas, but impose that two foot separation if they're going to exceed that three and four and a half feet in height. So that's what we hope this would accomplish, and would like to hear any suggestions and comments of the commission we have.
What about alley side property?
Generally considered to be a rear yard, so there's no limitation, so you can go right up to the property line in the alley.
Okay, all right.
The one that caught my eye when I read it before, maybe you've explained it enough, but I'm concerned about two B, the two foot setback. I guess I'm concerned about building new fences within, immediately against the side of a sidewalk. I understand from what you just said, that making it this way makes it, so it doesn't make other fences nonconforming, but I'd really like to see sidewalks, or fences slightly back from sidewalks.
So somewhat of a universal, whether it's for under-street side, having a minimum setback separation from a public sidewalk?
Yeah.
I think it's a slight dilemma, because we have so many four foot sidewalks in town that are not walkable with people side by side, in our burgeoning universe where we seem to be more, bigger people.
And strollers and dogs.
And, well, there's a lot of reasons, and I just, I tend to agree that I think it's a bit of an issue. I know when people plant a plant close to the sidewalk, and then they think it isn't going to grow so much, and it grows just six inches out into the four foot right walkway, it really makes it a one person sidewalk, and unlike some cities, we haven't done six foot walks that are more accommodating.
Right, and the new residential standard is five feet, that was adopted by the council earlier this year, and along arterials or collectors, they end up at six feet, but for a long period of time, they're four feet in width, the standard, and so we will have, we have a.
I think I'm perhaps more aware than some, just because Third Street is a big walking street, as I drove out, as I came out tonight, if you have a family, and they've got a stroller and a dog, wow, it's, we clearly don't have enough sidewalk.
They string out one at a time.
Right.
One ahead of the other.
Certainly, in most instances, the property line is going to be some distance behind the sidewalk, but that's not going to be universal in all cases, so, and especially in some of the newer subdivisions underneath the prior, which is now a 60 foot minimum right of way, we had a 50 foot minimum right of way that was allowed on 28 foot wide residential streets, and in those instances, you end up with property pins within the sidewalk itself, and there's an easement for that sidewalk to exist, but the owner's property actually technically includes 18 inches or so of that sidewalk.
Oh.
And so those would be the instances where somebody may be entitled currently to install the fence immediately adjacent to the sidewalk today underneath the current standards. There are other situations where, you know, possibly an encroachment permit was granted. I think the public work standard, if they're going to grant an encroachment permit to allow the fence to be constructed upon the public right of way, is at least a minimum of 12 inches, so one foot of separation from the sidewalk to the fence. But it would be certainly fairly simple to have a universal separation from sidewalks, so if we wanted to stick with the two feet and the seven feet, it's not going to be a significant hardship. Any existing fences that may be within that area could remain, and it would just come at the time of future replacement of those, that they need to be adjusted, the 24 inches or so, if that was the case. And that's only going to be probably in fairly limited cases, where they're going to be directly adjacent to the sidewalk, so I don't think that would impose a significant hardship to establish a minimum 24 inch, you know, two foot separation from the adjacent.
I would be much happier with a, with a minimum.
And honestly, it would simplify the language a great deal in that section, because section B could then just be directed to state that all fences will be located a minimum of 24 inches from an adjacent public walk, or seven feet from face to curb if there is no walk existing, and that's all it'd have to say.
After last, the last meeting when we were discussing this, I started to look at all the fences, and the front yard fences in the neighborhood, and the ones, the couple feet back are just, you just feel so much better walking down the sidewalk.
So if we'd like to do that, that'd be a fairly easy change to make, and I don't see any difficulty.
I would like to. One other point, the vision triangle on item four, we have a number of intersections where the, where there's a retaining wall at the intersection, and I can, I can see a three foot retaining wall with a three foot fence near the top of it, within the vision triangle, making it absolutely impossible to see.
And there's also, there's existing authority, this city engineer, to evaluate conditions and identify if some structure or physical feature is going to represent a side obstruction, and so it's 36 inches is generally above the adjacent grade is really the standard of the natural, kind of natural contours of the land. If somebody were to construct a retaining wall, and then wished to place a fence upon that, I suspect we would have them hold it back outside of that side triangle, and we'd have to evaluate that on a case by case basis.
Should that be stated here?
We could certainly add additional language regarding, you know, city engineers' review and approval, I don't.
Say something about how high above grade it could be within the site triangle, cumulative construction.
Yeah, the question becomes, you know, how complicated do you want to make the language about the measurement of grade?
Right.
And that's why I'm just kind of contemplating. I think in those situations, they will have just be addressed on a case by case basis, and I'll take a look at, and maybe consult with city engineer if they have any suggested language of how to address that.
Maybe something along the lines of cases that involve retaining walls and fences should, will be reviewed on a case by case basis. Say something as simple as that.
We could add some additional language to address those situations.
Or tall sunflowers.
Yeah, you can put that. Is there currently a permit requirement for fences?
There is.
Okay. Was, I noticed in the first sentence of A, it talks about obtaining a permit paying the fee, it looks like it's introducing the concept of a permit and a fee here.
It was language that was in the, if you recall, we kind of went through the historical ordinances, the related defenses over the last 40 years. It's not explicit anywhere. There is language generally in section one about structures and other features, and that's generally what I think has been utilized in the permit issuance. I actually kind of wanted to reinforce the fact that permits are required, and that's why that language was added here. It did appear in the, and I don't have the ordinance number in front of me, I think it was the 1971 that stated that the, essentially this was language I pulled out actually of that ordinance to reinsert that, just so that there was clarity that permits are required.
I was looking through the, through the code, I hadn't remembered seeing anything else about a fee in there, and it looks like this now is the only place where it talks about a fee, or the permit, so I see your point about wanting to reinforce that, it just looks here like it's a separate sort of thing, and so maybe if we said something to the effect of fences may be constructed after obtaining the required permit from the city, and taking out the rest of it, because when they go to get the permit, the fee will be obvious. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I can see down the road where ordinances start to propagate, where the future Planning and Zoning Commission has the discussion, and we're all dead wondering whether this was introducing a separate fee or not.
That would also make it easier for staff when they are actually producing the permit, and give staff an opportunity to reinforce the three foot, the four and a half foot, and the six foot, and.
Retaining walls.
And say, just keep in mind, Mr. Fence Builder, Mrs. Fence Builder, that this is what you can do, this is what you cannot do, and you can't put up an eight foot fence, you can't put up a six foot fence, you can put up a three or a four and a half foot fence on the backyard, you can put up a six foot fence, and there again, your comment about the retaining wall and the fence on top of the retaining wall. So I think having all of that at least at the beginning, before you start digging holes, is probably a pretty good idea.
Yeah, I mean, the fees are established by the council annually, and the fee resolution that's passed, and fence permits and all other associated permits are included in that. There are sections of the code that make reference to fees established by the council and others that don't, and so we certainly could simplify that language.
I also noticed a couple of typos. In A1, it says fences within all zoning district, which that should be plural, and then in section 440 is misspelled.
Oh, yep, thank you.
I really like how clean this ordinance is, and that it's just in one spot.
Yep, across all zones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll eliminate a fair amount of text, redundant text.
Yeah, you get a printing cost.
Repeat the same thing, and, you know.
Clearly you didn't have an attorney draft this.
The old one was like reading a software manual.
Right.
You just said that the page before and the page before that.
Yes, I know. Okay, well, those modifications will set for hearing at the upcoming meeting on September 10th.
So we don't need to take any sign of, oh, you're saying hearing, hearing, right, for the, for our next meeting?
Correct, well, this, as a legislative amendment, will have to be considered during a notice of public hearing, so that's scheduled for December, September 10th.
September, okay, great. Okay, so we're moving on into item number seven, which is to review a draft of the street frontage exception amendment.
So if you recall, from, on this item, there was discussion about the fact that there were a number of lots around town that the city had recognized as legal building lots, had issued permits upon, where they didn't meet a, and then the city subsequently adopted zoning language that related to a requirement that lots abut a public street other than an alley, and that no building would construct in a lot that did not abut, essentially every building hereafter, Richter and Boo, shall be on a lot abutting a public street. There are a number of homes on Hidden Lane and Homestead, and a couple lots on residents that are essentially in this situation, that should a home be destroyed, they would not be, may not be, questionably, may not be able to be reconstructed because of that limitation upon those lots as not abutting a public street. The city attorney reviewed this recently, felt that prohibiting the ability for lots, those lots that have been previously approved by the council, or had been already developed previously, and denying their ability to redevelop or develop would be, could be construed as regulatory takings, and denying them any economic use of the property, and recommend that we pursue a legislative amendment to accept out those lots that have been previously approved and recognized by the city council. So the two sections actually previously, what was section A4 and B, were kind of saying the same thing, and were kind of redundant, and so essentially, it's being simplified into the new section four, which would just state that the legal lots registered that had been approved by the council prior to the adoption of zoning code, and which do not have public public streets shall be accepted from this requirement, where sufficient permanent legal access is available via public right of way, private access easement, or other legal means, where if safe and convenient access or servicing fire protection are required off-street parking. So the safe and convenient access, servicing, fire protection is all the same language that was previously existing in item number B, and would just essentially allow those lots to be recognized. They would not allow any future lots to be created in that configuration. I mean, we do have a number of planned unit developments that don't meet that standard, but they're, they go through the PUD process to have the private streets that don't abut a public right of way, and so we have a number of, you know, PUDs that have access via 20 foot wide public, or private streets, and do not technically abut a public street, but those are addressed through the PUD process, so, where they have that flexibility to adjust other elements of the zoning code. So that is, the language is, has been reviewed and prepared by the city attorney, and for the council, for the commission's comments and review.
Any questions or comments?
Looks really good. I don't see any problems with it, I like it.
Seems clear to me.
Sensible, practical.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, again, we will notice for public hearing for consideration before the commission on September 10th.
September 10th. Okay. So are we on item eight already, and it's only 7:20?
We are. We are. I thought, obviously, the real, these are better, the helpful.
Okay, all right, yeah, I had, all right, our item number eight is the citizen survey questions discussion. Bill is circulating around questions he drafted. I also promised Nils I would.
One more, Bill?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, there you go.
Oh, sorry.
Introduced the questions that he suggested as well, but why don't we start with the ones that you prepared?
So I think there were three areas of, three subject areas that were discussed for citizen survey questions, the first of which I think related to planning and assessment, and maybe mitigation planning related to climate change, I think there was a discussion that Nils had suggested a question related to that topic, and he actually has some different languages, was a slightly modified language, and when you can share an email that he provided for that. So the first is, and it's kind of in the format of many of our survey questions, is I agree that the city of Moscow should begin efforts to study the potential local impacts of climate change, and potential mitigation actions, and it's a Likert stale of strongly agree, agree, neutral disagree, or strongly disagree. So that was that question, I don't, if you want to go over Nils wording, because it's in the same subject matter.
Okay, his first question was, how important do you feel it is for the city commissions in partnership with other stakeholders, UI, Chamber, et cetera, to begin planning to mitigate impacts of climate change, and I would imagine it would be a sliding scale? And that would be the first one, okay, so that goes with.
The, I think, actually, my last one here is probably a modification of his, essentially his, his second question there, so, so those were kind of the two, I guess, suggestions or options, the, I tried to maybe simplify the language a little bit, you know, to remove the multiple commissions or partnerships, and just kind of. commissions or partnerships and just kind of get to the point of, you know, do you think we should be looking at that subject? And that's just to make it very clear, hopefully clear and to the point. The more simple the question generally means, the better. So those are two options there. The other thing we talked about and was looking at a question regarding neighborhood characteristics and looking at what people are interested in. And so I, we had run a question in 2004 that asked multiple questions about what's more important to you, kind of proximity to work or proximity to schools, proximity to parks, proximity to commercial services. And so it was kind of a long, multi-part question, and I was going to suggest possibly rerunning that, just to kind of see if there, over the last ten years, where there's been significant change. However, the National Realtors Association actually asked questions that were kind of more targeted directly to walkability of neighborhoods and the relative importance of walkability of neighborhoods. And so the second question here is really the question that they did on the national scale. There are a few slight wording modifications in like the last response, but very similar. The questions are pretty much, of the two neighborhood characteristics, what's most important to you? And they get to choose kind of one or the other. And so the first one was a neighborhood that includes a mix of housing types and stores and businesses that are easy to walk to, or a neighborhood that has houses only and you have to drive to stores and other businesses. So it's kind of looking at the walkability. Houses with smaller yards, and the second one is houses with smaller yards, and you would have a shorter commute to work, or houses with larger yards, and you would have a longer commute to work. And it's really kind of putting up some of the compromises that, you know, to make a compact community, you typically are small lots, you're going to be closer to commercial uses, you may not even be standalone detached single-family homes, in order to be able to either have an infill project that has multiple units, or to just have overall subdivisions that have smaller lot sizes, and kind of what's more important to the respondent. You know, the third one is houses with small yards, where it's easy to walk to schools, stores, and restaurants. Houses with large yards, where you have to drive to gain access to parks, playgrounds, and recreational areas. And the last one was kind of gauging to own or rent an attached single-family home, where you share one or more common walls, townhouses or condominium, where it is easy to walk to shops, restaurants, have a shorter commute to work, or own or rent a detached single-family house and have to drive to shops and restaurants and have a longer commute to work. On the national scale, the responses on the first three are more towards the walkable, and the response on the last is for the detached single-family. And I think it would be kind of interesting just to see how the Moscow response compares to the national. It'd be kind of, it'd give us something to kind of compare the two. And so it's really kind of just more about the trade-offs between larger lots and larger homes possibly, and smaller and more compact, and, you know, trading off some of that land area for walkability and compact development, and kind of see what people's individual preferences are.
It's a hard thing to know how to take a positive steps toward considering that single-family homes aren't the only and the most ideal part of the world. I've got, I didn't bring it with me tonight, but I've got a couple of new books out there that were, these national writers are saying, we have to start thinking in terms of not deifying the single-family home as, you're on your way to heaven if you get a single-family home. The thought that you rented or that you lived in an apartment makes you a second-class citizen. And in the West, basically, that's what we believe in. It's hard to know how to state that. That's why this comes off the way it does, because, I mean, single-family home, that's what we're sort of taught to
That's the American dream.
That's the American dream, right.
But I think it depends on whether it's an urban or a non-urban context. I mean, in Seattle, people are buying, having to buy into attached apartments.
Well, of course, but I can't even refer to Boise at this table, let alone Seattle. You know, I get scalded when I even mention that Boise exists. So it is true that people have changed their attitudes in Seattle and Portland both. I don't know, I mean, I don't know what, how we get questions that begin, I think it's a long educational process, and we
And it may be a generational perspective.
Sure, I think it is.
Is there any way, the survey indicates that?
We can stratify based upon age of the respondent, and that might be interesting to look at.
Because that's where a lot of the changes in the urban population is people not wanting to spend their lives commuting like their parents did, so they
I mean, pre-World War, we were apartment nation, and post-World War, you know, single-family homeownership has dramatically
The other question that I have, and I don't know, I haven't really been sitting down and thinking about this, but soon, and we've, at this table, we've had this consideration, as the city uses out and grows out, we need to be thinking of that next neighborhood center and how that is created. In other words, it's sort of folly to say, okay, you have to be out past Mountain View Park, and the guy, the person saying, well, walking to town is not an option, but what we need, and remember, we had a little red spot on the map for a few years, and it kind of went away, but somehow we need a way to discuss not just the width of the lot, but also the access to some of those, you know, the restaurant, the coffee shop, the local something. And people worry about how we say that, you know, because it always seemed like a 7-Eleven was what we were talking about. They kind of went away now.
But it was the Circle K when I was a kid at Blaine and Six. I mean, that was, that was the kind of neighborhood
How do we get that little, the neighborhood thing?
Well, people think slurp and burp. I mean, you know, that was the resistance in, as the city started to grow to the east, and there actually were provisions to accommodate commercial, from what I recall, is that people were afraid they'd have a slurp and burp in their backyard.
I just wonder if one of the questions along the way with narrower this and that is to, should we be thinking about, should our planning staffs be trying to imagine where that next little, I don't want, village, that neighborhood
Neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood commercial is going to be located, yeah.
You know, there have been two attempts, as many who have been on this body are aware
People get crazy.
South Gate Third, out by the Roundabout, and all proposed neighborhood business out there, which would have been great. And then on Mountain View, in the, at the time, was Windfall Hills, Harvest Hills again, and adjacent properties, adjacent residences, you know, arguing against those.
I just don't think we can give up just because we've lost the battle a couple of times. And somehow people immediately see adult bookstore in their neighborhood, and that makes my head sweat, but I don't know if any national agencies, I don't know if that question has cropped in. How is it, how can we talk about that without?
Well, we have asked questions in the past about proximity to commercial services and how important that is, or the allowance of commercial uses in residential areas. And when it's in the abstract, I think everybody's in favor of it. And it's being proposed next door, then also, no, dear lord, it's going to lure kids across the street and they're going to get killed.
I think we're still too enamored of the car to let go of the convenience that, so we jump in the car, and five minutes, we're downtown. It does, it's still a small enough town to be able to do that, and the traffic isn't terrible at all.
Gasoline is still cheap enough.
Apparently, until it becomes like, whoa, it's going to cost as much to go get the gallon of milk as it costs to buy the gallon of milk. Maybe that's
It is hard with our little town. There's no doubt about it. Again, if we go away to another place, I've been shocked at my hometown. I remember thirty years ago, some fancy developer planner said, there will come a day when Eagle Road is going to be the center of the universe of this valley. And it was hard to imagine it, and it is absolutely the center. I mean, it is now Eagle Road, and now, what's that, six, seven miles from Boise is now the most busy street in the state of Idaho, you know. And so in, now that's in an area that's been growing at three percent plus for the last thirty-five years. And of course, we're not growing, we can barely grow at one percent. So I realize it isn't as critical for us, but anyway, I just can't help but at least discuss it, try to
I can envision that district. It's just, you know, it just seems so far in the
I know.
Well, I don't know how it would fit into your question format, but something about supporting housing choices for people, because there isn't a presumption in most planning and comprehensive plans that people want single-family houses, but what if they don't? And should we be looking at accommodating people who are making different housing choices? That might work into your second question, and it might not necessarily be an age thing. It might be, it might be an age thing on the young end as well as the old end.
Both sides of that question. Well, you know, the first question talks about a neighborhood that includes a mix of housing types.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that's
And then we could also impose that a neighborhood that has, we could on the other side say primary, you know, sing, only, single-family only
Right.
Homes. And just, you know, to kind of gauge the reaction to that.
Well, you know Quite nicely in number two, I think.
Yes. Yeah, I think, I mean, under
Single-family versus mixed use?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the first question under number two is really a neighborhood that includes a mix of housing types and stores and businesses that are easy to walk to is kind of a mix of this neighborhood.
Inferring, I guess, housing choices, yeah, okay.
And we could
Yeah, that's true.
And we could reinforce on the opposite side, a neighborhood that is single-family only, and that kind of, that kind of sets
I guess that's where I was going, to see if the tone has changed in terms of more of a spectrum in what people want in housing choices.
I think we see some different choices out on White Avenue. We see that there are choices that people are clearly
And they like the idea of a community space, et cetera. I was thinking of, yeah.
Those sold, you're out there, are you not?
Small lots, no yards, and more higher density.
Every time I have to take an hour and a half to mow my yard, I think
Time to mow, you're in here.
I have nothing to mow. The only grass we have is the tree lawn, and that's done by a service, so it was yeah.
I'll think of you as a quarter acre that
Mow yard work. I do appreciate that. I mean, we play on the weekend.
Just don't mow.
Yeah.
That's what I, I just don't mow.
And if you don't water, that helps too.
I don't do that either. My water bill is nil.
The weeds still grow, though, if you don't mow.
So I thought that might be kind of interesting to kind of compare and contrast with the national
I like that, yeah.
Because we have kind of a similar, and see if, and I can kind of guess the spectrum we'll see, but I'm kind of interested to see the response on the last question, or the last item on that list, the fourth item on that list. The other, the other topic area that was discussed focused around retiree and senior housing. And so, you know, I was suggesting, so the second one, the second of the senior housing one is kind of a modification of a suggestion that Nils had provided. The question above that, the I agree there's significant need for more retiree senior housing within Moscow, is just kind of trying to gauge the interest. We hear from, you know, a couple people that there's a, that there's a need. I'm just kind of interested in kind of gauging the perspective of the community as a whole, that this is something that really is important. And then if it's a significant need, Nils had suggested these items to kind of gauge priority of suitable housing, public transportation services, social activities and learning opportunities, and greater access to healthcare services and facilities.
More transportation options, you got that?
Yes, yeah, increased public transportation services to provide
Oh, there we go, yeah, okay. I was looking at his.
Yep.
It looks like you covered what he had dropped down.
Sounds like my own home.
Well, that was kind of the last one. I don't know, I kind of thought of that one, because, well, I guess what I was thinking of was Guardian. You know, the kind of, if you're going to age in your home, the assistance that you need with household maintenance and lawn care and other duties, and I think Guardian is really kind of fitting a niche there, providing that kind of service.
Well, that's where ADUs kind of work in to this as well, in terms of enabling people to age in place.
And one option could be, we could add a category about the allowance of accessory dwelling units to be able to
Yeah, I think it would be a good opportunity.
I think it's a nice place to flip that discussion in at this point. I've had, oddly enough, I've had a couple of people in the last year try to implore me to talk about retiree issues. I guess all my friends are As it should be, I suppose. But they're, so that discussion has come up, and I'm not sure even, not entirely sure what it means. We have, the Good Sam has been the sort of icon of that kind of thing, where there's smaller houses, one-level
Graduated care.
Every morning, as I come down my stairs, I realize that there may come a day. So I see people making that choice, and so that's being discussed.
Yeah, it's kind of one of those, if there is that kind of demand out there, you'd think there would be somebody who is wanting to meet that demand and be able to make a profit of doing it. And so that's kind of the piece we keep talking about, or keep hearing from folks, that they feel that there's a demand, and maybe this is something that would help kind of gauge your response about how important or how adequate they feel that particular housing stock or supply is available.
I suppose that our weather, our winter weather somewhat detracts from the
They just go to Arizona.
Because many people, many of those same friends that are talking to me about it tend to seem to go to someplace called Yuma or someplace, I have no idea where that is, but they seem to mention it in the wintertime, and that's probably why our, being around a university is a great place to retire. But December, January, February makes it just a little tricky if you don't love snow.
Well, it's the ice.
Yes.
It's people fearing breaking their
Slip hazards.
So I think that's part of the reason why we're not seeing developers pushing on that issue a little bit more.
And Good Sam's Airview Village, I think, kind of did develop a little bit slower than what they had anticipated for the build-out of the twin home units. And so I know they're not the, you know, the lowest-cost option available, but they were not, I mean, it took a fair number of years for them to finish.
I guess, for some reason, the people, I've just had two people come and talk to me and say, well, what could you do on P&amp;Z? And in both cases, these people said, but don't give me Good Sam. I don't know why they did, but that was, seemed to be the caveat, like, well, I don't want to move to Good Sam, but I want some retirement place that is, has access, ability, but not, and I don't
Well, it just seems like the ADUs is one option to enable people to stay where they are, or the other being some kind of planned unit development that has shared amenities and maybe sidewalk shoveling services and things that sort of help people to get through those months, I don't know.
You know, another example was Tampa. You may recall Tampa Commons went through an amendment to modify and actually consolidate some lots to be able to build single-story units, thinking that that was, you know, a portion of the market that they were missing, because all of their housing units were two-stores, if not three-stores. They had never built any of the three-story models they designed, but, and so they called the Zlots, and we went through an amendment of the PUD to allow the Zlots, allow the single-story construction, and then it just never, never took off for them.
What about the one right past Moscow Buildings Play? That's happened since I was, they were going to build one-story units there, when we modified from the zoning to
Oh, the duplexes on the west side of Jefferson?
I believe so.
And those were all, those were all single level. And those were all, those were all single level, I believe.
I think that was the market, market they said they were going to target them.
And I don't know who, and then you also have, you know, Creekside Senior on one as well, that's a, you know, an affordable senior housing project, and I think they've done fairly well out there. But yes, it's tough to understand what's our, what's our role in facilitating somebody trying to meet that demand or measure that demand, and really, it takes a third partner, it takes a developer to come in and see that demand, and us to facilitate the project to be able to deliver what, what that constituency would like to see in a development. And I don't think there's anything that we have that's inhibiting that, or just missing that private party.
Somebody to implement it, yeah.
That says, "I see a market here, and I, if I put together this project for a nice fifty-five and over development, I can, I can make this work." Prospect Place was, was intended to be that development on West Pluss River Drive on Sunnyside, and it didn't take off. And they had a plan to finish out another two acres of development, small lots, you know, viewed as being kind of a golf cart community, and, and it just never got any traction. So, the market track record has not been great.
Maybe part of it is because it doesn't address the part about accessibility to things downtown.
Yeah.
That's why, like I said, crossing.
Exactly, that's.
Maybe that's what's wrong with it.
It seems like that's a legacy crossing.
They might be nice houses, they might have good lawn care and all that.
You're close to the hospital, you're close to downtown.
Oh, I still have to get in the car, and that is what I don't want to do anymore.
There's isolation, yeah.
Well, I think, and I think that's been kind of the issue with Fairview, because it's, you know, at the very.
Those are gorgeous. They're really nice inside, but.
They're also very expensive.
They're very expensive, and they're stuck way out there. You have to drive unless, and that's another thing, having to get into this van that.
For the shuttle service.
Yeah, I mean, we're a really independent bunch of people in this culture, and to think that, oh, I have to wait for the van, or arrange for the van, or go when everyone else goes.
Whereas, the, the original Good Sam community, even though it's not connected to downtown or commercial space, certainly has a neighborhood park. I see people, residents, going out and watching soccer games and enjoying the park, and things they feel, they're connected to the community, and, and that.
Fairview's really isolated.
Yeah.
It is. It'll get developed around eventually, and it'll be, feel more integrated. Right now, it's right on the edge of town, and so, it feels more isolated. It is, topographically, it's isolated too.
Yes, it is.
It's kind of, you move into the, the adjacent property to the west is fairly steep, and it's challenging property to.
So, it can, I guess I'm wondering with this question, what we would find out that would help us to guide us? I guess more public transportation options and.
Well, again, it's kind of my question of asking a question that we can act upon.
Right.
What, what influence can we have?
That, that's my question.
Yeah, what, if it, you know, from, for, for the charge of this commission, greater access to healthcare and services and facilities, or social activities and learning opportunities, what would we do to impact that? What planning policies would need to be adjusted or implemented? And I, and I just haven't been able to pin my finger on exactly.
I, I would agree with you, that's what I'm struggling with, yeah.
What we could do to have an impact. Now, I do, I do think it might be kind of interesting to ask just the, I agree there's a significant need for more senior retiree housing, just to kind of see if, if, you know, you have a lot of people, certainly at a younger age, that may have no clue, and so, you're probably going to get a lot of, I don't know, or neutral responses, but, you know, we keep hearing that, that there's this great need, and better understanding that need might be helpful, but it won't be really in any significantly quantified manner. The, we can only really hope to get probably two questions, and so, there's four here. So, at some point, we're going to need to make a decision of what we think is most important and, and what, what we want to have included.
Yeah, I think that probably the upper question is more critical for us, more relevant, even though I, I was just going to say, I, I looked in there to see enhanced, well, social activities and learning opportunities for retirees, and one of the things that I is, that I would observe is that the University of Idaho, as much as I love it, has walked away from all that sort of stuff. And I think that's a serious mistake.
Without the community enhancement program.
I have a few friends in Pocatello who have moved from out in the glorious outback to into town in Pocatello because Idaho State offers these senior, these classes, these advanced kind of classes, and so, I'm hearing a couple of friends saying, "Oh, we're having so much fun. We go to this class and over at ISU," and I, I don't, I guess we have to whisper in Chuck's ear, but Idaho has, has carefully cut off every bit of continuing education that we ever had. Have you noticed that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say something bad about my favorite institution.
So, does it make sense to focus more on the first two questions that you have?
And we can submit three, and see if they happen to have room. You know, if you wanted to say the first two are the priority, third, if there's room.
Yeah, I think it does.
Then we can, we could certainly do that.
I find the first one to be my first priority, but I think it's worded wrong. I think that that just sets, the whole, the terminology that has gotten attached, whether it be climate change or global warming, people just go bonkers one way or the other instead of being logical.
Do some suggested language?
I don't know, but.
I mean, I struggle with.
And I read the minutes from the last meeting, and I thought, yeah, finding the right language that doesn't just set, because that's what we all do. The minute something either agrees with our instincts or our.
Well, I think probably it's important to try to make a question that says, "Should we be thinking about all," I, I don't know whether the word even "climate" is used, but should we be holistic in thinking about our planning guidelines? Because the word "global warming" has become a political discussion, and now, it's just like religion, does God exist or doesn't he? And there's no discussion at a point. So, I, I think you're right, that if we could think of a way to talk about planning without seeing global warming.
Well, it doesn't say. It's, I like the way it's worded here, because it just talks about, are you concerned about the impacts of climate change? And climate change is something that's been with the earth since its inception, and it's, there's never been climate stasis, there's always been climate change, and we, human beings have always had to deal with it in some fashion. So, should we be thinking about that? What are, what's the potential? I, I don't see a problem with asking that question in that context. I think Bill's done a great job of breaking that down into something that's pretty apolitical there.
Climate change is supposedly the neutral term. It's global warming that's the.
Right, yeah, that's right.
I don't think it is, though.
There's no. No, it's not. There's really not an argument that climate changes.
But I don't think there's any other way to say it.
We thought we're more about the things, the physical things that could be accommodated. As in accommodating for energy needs and, and water.
You know, if it's.
Maybe if it got more specific about things.
What about things like, I, I looked at Manitoba's policy, I'll actually give it to you, because they were trying to avoid the, which I would like to do. I, I don't think it matters whether people believe in climate change or not. I think it's irrelevant to good smart growth and, and good land use policy. And, and so, if we get into an argument about whether climate change exists or not, we're not going to move off of, we aren't going to go anywhere.
Conservation of resources.
And Manitoba was dealing with that. And so, really, do people favor planning policies that reduce per capita energy consumption, that reduce greenhouse gas emissions, or pollution, or whatever? You start to hit the symptoms, not the, not the idea, and, and then you make land use decisions that, that call for small-scale mixed land uses and, and mixed commercial. I mean, you know, there's, they, they had this really graceful way of, of not taking on the whole battle of climate change, and just saying, you know, let's, let's let that term float up there somewhere, and let's look at what the land use decisions are that make a difference in terms of reducing the negative. I think most people would agree they want a healthy, walkable, safe community, and, and so, you know.
It was easy to put a question out of the softball out there that everybody wants that.
Right. So, you have to get something that's quite less.
What's, what do I have to give to get that?
Right.
And the title of that report is climate change mitigation.
It, it is, but I found it, I know. But, but you're right.
What about water for us? Don't you think really that for Moscow, water still may be a bigger issue than any other, any other change?
Water's likely king.
I mean, it just seems to me that, I don't know at what point, when the, when the water table drops ten, twelve, fifteen, twenty, I don't know how many feet it has to drop before we're going to start strangling it.
I think the adjudication process of the Pluss Basin is what's going to drive that conversation, and they actually having to start divvy up water rights and curtailing water rights and finding out who's junior or senior, I mean, that's really going to be the, the point. And they're starting to fund, you know, ramping up for the adjudication of the basin, and I think that's going to be the, the driver.
Just, we're, we're such a tiny community, I don't know if between the two of us, if, and Pullman seems to be less interested than us in a way, but, but, but they shouldn't be. And it seems with, if, is a town, is a little region of fifty thousand people, is that, can we do something creative about our water issue? And to me, that is probably more important than, I mean, well, the sea isn't going to rise up and take us over here, so we don't have to worry about that. We've got a few, I, I don't know what else could happen. It looks like my trees are going to get knocked down soon, but I don't know if that's because they're old or what.
You know, the typical things are going to be that, you know, in the field are going to be that storm events may be more intense, precipitation events may be more intense, understanding, you know, how to protect against, you know, property damage and, and public safety in those instances. You know, food production, the local economy, and agriculture, what's the impact of any type of temperature increases? Plant communities and others that could be impacted are kind of the, the major themes that are generally studied as potential impacts, and I'm sure there's many others that I'm not familiar with, but those are the common, you know, how do, how does everything respond to, you know, that level of temperature increase and different precipitation patterns?
I mean, one of the things that we don't ever say to ourselves, or it doesn't seem like we do, is how lucky we are that we're not growing more than one percent a year, or water would have already been a problem. If we were growing at three percent a year and we could now have forty thousand people in the city, I believe we would be having more discussion about it. So, in some ways, I think that issue, the water issue is, is a little more critical than almost any of the other things that we've got here on the table. I don't know what he, how are you feeling, counselor?
Oh, I would agree with you. I think that what we should be doing is trying to make decisions and make policies over things we can change, and things that we can identify, and, as you said, keep all of that away and work on something that we can change, something that we can affect. And the idea of climate change, I don't think we can affect climate change in Moscow. I don't think we can affect it one bit. And I'm not sure that if we got everybody in the state, Washington and Oregon, together, I don't know that we could affect climate change positively or negatively. But we can affect.
Amount of water we use?
Amount of energy we use, the amount, the amount of energy we use, the amount of infrastructure we develop and pay for, and extend if, if we don't have transportation, land use planning that is supported by transportation.
One of the things.
Other than cars. I mean, you know, and, and walkability, I think all of those things, I mean, even in here, they talk about, we, we talked about small-scale urban agriculture last year, they talk about food miles, you know, reducing food miles that people have to, to bring in food that they consume. I mean, you know, so there's, I think there's a lot of things, I guess I disagree, I think there are a lot of things we can do to have a healthier, smarter community that reduces energy consumption and reduces the sort of negative effects of greenhouse gas emission, you know, and pollution. But I agree with you in the sense that, yeah, if we were Philadelphia or, or New York, we'd probably have a whole lot more impact on, on, if we, you know, it's, it's, I think it's more in just looking at responsible land use planning and, and encouraging the things that we're already trying to encourage in the first set of questions that Bill was asking. Are, are people willing to, and it can become an economic decision for them too. I mean, do we want to keep paying for extended infrastructure, for example? Or do we favor more compact development that offers opportunities for infill and ADUs and, and other sort of densification strategies that, that reduce the amount of our carbon footprint, you know? And, and I think, but whether that causes climate change isn't what the issue should be in, in, in what we're thinking about.
It shouldn't be that.
I don't think it should be, yeah. I think that what, I, I mean, I don't think we need to take that bull by the horns. That, that's how I feel about it. That I think we already have some, you know, ideas that we've been running the last couple of years in terms of urban agriculture, and in terms of accessory dwellings, and other, and mixed-use development, other types of strategies that help to mitigate the issues of climate change in any place, you know? And, and that's a side benefit, but I don't think it's, the direct goal is what I'm trying to say.
If you couch it as, as conservation of scarce resources, then there's really no argument.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. Why, why create an argument and divisiveness?
Right.
It just doesn't seem, it seems pointless.
Like John said, if you talk about something that you could have an effect on it, everyone needs water, and if we have to conserve it, because we don't know how much water we have. So, it's an undefined finite resource, and conservation of it is just smart public policy.
If you look at it in just a little broader way, a way I'd like to try to pose questions is, we have a shockingly handsome and useful little downtown. I just ran down to, for dinner to get a takeout, and I couldn't, there was no parking place, you know? I mean, I was just rather thrilled that on a Wednesday night, the town is just sparkling, and of course, the suits are back.
As an entertainment disparate, not as a retail.
But, so what I would like to pose as our questions is, how, you know, should we be making decisions in our planning that enhance our already pretty good village that we have here? How, how do we enhance that? And I would absolutely agree that, that discussion about, I, I said global warming, and I made a mistake, but I don't even think we need to say climate change. I think we need to make the best decisions to keep our little town functioning in a very positive way. And I don't see how anybody would, at this table or any table, would want to argue with that. That just seems like, I, I mean, I, I am, I have an apocryphal story. My children live in Park City, you know, closer to God and all that, and they, closer to ski mountains, and they've been coming here now. My daughter-in-law's been coming for the last year and a half. Every month, she comes here to run a yoga studio in, down on Main Street, and she's fallen in love with Moscow. She just said, "My gosh, this is such a cool town. You know, I could move here." And I, I've, I've been impressed with that. And I've been impressed with that because they, up to now, they've always said, well, you know, gosh, we don't want to come to your dumb little town. And now that they're here, now that, so, and that includes things like the co-op, the restaurants, the, just the general sensibility of our town.
Wendy, you made a real good point, I think, when you said, and you were talking about what else, the entertainment, the food downtown is really quite nice, but if you need to buy something, you can't do it downtown.
Except, I mean, in most cases.
Unless you're looking for bike stuff.
Yeah, well, I mean, specialty businesses of certain, but it's online, too, that's the other issue.
Yeah, and that's, there are any number of any town, of towns nationwide, probably worldwide, that it has moved from the core. When I grew up in this town, and I did, I started third grade here, and there were two or three lady shops, two or three men's shops.
Three hardwares.
Pardon me?
Three hardwares when I moved down.
Yeah, there were three hardware stores, there were two or three shoe stores, there were restaurants up and down Main Street. Now, they were all, I'm going to use the term meat and potatoes, American restaurants. We didn't have the Chinese village till 1964, when Yik moved from Colfax over. And every other small town was like that. And almost none of the small towns are like that today, because on the edge, you're going to have Walmart, a Winco, a Rosar's or a Safeway. And when you want to buy something, clothing, whatever, all of the small shops that were owned by the local people, in my case, the Creytons, I grew up with the Creighton, with Jay Ramstead, his father ran Creytons. Jay moved out of town, Creytons is no longer there. And same with Michaelbest, and I think that's just endemic in the situation, and I don't think they're ever coming back. But we've got a pretty good deal down here, but that good deal is not, it's not enough to focus your financial lifeblood on. There aren't enough businesses, they don't produce enough jobs, and they don't sell enough goods. The reason that Rollefsen's Grocery Store is no longer down on where the Red Bento is, is because Rollefsen's couldn't compete with Safeway and couldn't compete with Rosar's, and they finally just closed. And then it became an athletic store, and then it couldn't compete with the Tri-States. And now, as far as the athletic stuff goes, Tri-State doesn't compete very well with Big Five. And so we've gone with a small, from a small, locally-owned and operated store to an outfit that the profit leaves town.
A lot of it goes online.
Pardon me?
It doesn't even go to the big box, it goes online.
And that goes, and that brings, so.
That makes the co-op particularly unique.
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, in my mind, the co-op is probably the most cherished thing about hello in the co-op.
Certainly.
I don't want to embarrass you, but it is, that's what's making my children, when they come here, they have to stop at the co-op. As we drive into town, they get off the plane, boom, got to go to the co-op, got to get some fine food that will make us healthy, and.
And that's a story of the co-op movement, since I've been here, it started out at Kentucky Fried Chicken, it's probably had other homes, too, and it went several places, and I really honestly didn't patronize it very much until it is in its current location, because it's very central, and I think that it's a very successful location for it, being in the center of our downtown. Didn't your business like improve by 40 to 50% fairly quickly, just with that last move from Third Street to there?
That's like the sixth or seventh location.
Tiny, and Third Street was pretty small.
It was just too.
Oh, Third Street was small.
Oh, Kentucky Fried Chicken.
And Third Street used to be another grocery store.
Yeah, I bet it was.
When I grew up.
Modern Way.
Pardon me?
Modern Way.
And of course, we have the farmer's market as other.
Oh, you mean IGA?
It was IGA.
Modern Way was in Howard Hughes.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
And you could have a charge account there on a little handle.
So back to the citizen survey question.
Trip number one, we're getting a little bit.
Item number eight. So what do you, what do you all want to do? What's, what's the advice to Bill in terms of?
Are we voting on two questions that we think can get on?
Well, ideally, two would be the, the.
You'll get two.
And there, you know, there could be a, another question's not on this list, if you want to ask. We do have one more meeting, so if there is a subject or a topic that you want to look at, you know, you can say, okay, we only like one of these four, and we want to create a new one about X, I can work on drafting a new.
I just think that first question should be a little more holistic. I, I, I mean, Nels isn't here to, to, so I'd be happy to hassle him tonight.
Yeah, and I've been going back and forth.
But I would like to, I don't, I just thought John's comment was pretty good, in the sense that what we need to do is try to focus on stuff that a little town can do, trying to ask questions about that, that are, because I think personally, I've been reason to believe that scientists I talk to say that the Pacific Northwest is probably strangely in a slightly different model than some other places in America. And, and so I don't know, I'm not smart enough to know what that is, but we're not in a drought condition. I, I mean, if we lived in California right now, we could be really seriously fearful.
Thirsty.
And, and we're not, we're not there, but what we do have, what we do have is this kind of university community in these two towns, and we need to focus on the things that we can do to make, continue to make these two cities more useful to us. And so any of these other things are pretty good, but I, I'm a little bit worried, as Deb is, about starting to act like we're worried about climate change when we're really not. Did I say something wrong?
Well, I would, I mean, I am worried about it, but I think the only way to, to deal with a problem is, what can you do right where you are, and what is the problem that is happening right where you are? And here, it's absolutely, water is going to be a problem, and it already is, and energy could, too.
So in terms of land use, what, how does that tie in to land use? Because that's really what our mission is. And that, I mean, I totally agree with you that water is essential.
So I can see how we can do things with water, and I can see how we could do things with things that we would permit for construction, as in solar panels or small-scale wind or.
Which is all allowed today.
It's all allowed today.
Yeah.
So those are the things that matter to me, because you can do those things. They're, they're, the technology's there, it works.
Well, we could be, I guess, we talked about the gray water issue and recycling from your washing machine, et cetera. I mean, some things that you didn't used to be able to do, I guess you are able to do now, but other forms of encouraging site water retention and use of rainwater, et cetera. I mean, there are things we could do to take more advantage of surface water or non-aquifer water alternatives. I just, yeah, I'm trying to help Bill, I think we should help Bill figure out how it ties into, directly to a question that would impact this commission on land use, and that's where I'm having a hard time coming up with a big idea, I guess.
Right. You know, on the whole, you know, climate change discussion, there is two sides of it. There is, what are your emissions and what are you contributing to the situation, if that's contributing? And then, regardless of what you're contributing, what is going to happen to you, and what can you do to plan to mitigate the impacts of that? And so the tenure was not to really talk about, because a lot of things, you know, a lot of the discussion is about, you know, the contributions of the greenhouse gases, but if you were to put that side of it aside and say, well, the malls predict regardless of this is the direction we're going, and these are the changes you're likely to see, and what does that mean to you locally? You know, that was kind of what this was more, I guess, targeted to stay away from, you know, who's causing it or why is it happening? Because the climate, like Jim said, the climate has changed forever. And, and so it will change, and does it make sense to look at what direction it's heading now, whether it's, you know, temperature, or whether it's precipitation levels, or whether it's storm intensity and events, and then, you know, are there land use decisions based upon that to mitigate the impacts of those changes? Not, not looking at necessarily what behavioral changes you would make, or land use or development changes you would make to reduce contributions to that, but more along the lines of, well, honestly, personally, I don't even know with great specificity, what does it mean here other than probably to the great, you know, to the general sense that Nels mentioned, that it's, Nels mentioned that it's, you know, this is probably one of the better locations, at least in the continental U.S., that appears to have some of the least drastic impacts.
You know, we've used the word walk several times, and I think it's, it's wiser, I'm just, my little discovery for the summer, you'd think I'm slow getting around, but I've been for several years now, riding out toward Troy on my bike, boom, 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 trying to get in a couple of rides a week, and all of a sudden, it dawned on me, hey, I can get in a ride on my bike and end up at the mall. And so now I'm going the other way, and, and so how can you get to the mall, walking or riding your bike? You can do it. And we have a young lady here from Africa who's just going to school, living with us for a month before she entered her freshman year, and so we started, rather than taking her out into the country, we started riding our bike every morning over to the mall, and just to that side of town, and it dawned on me that I can get to the mall without going through town. I don't have to ride on Third Street, I can go to the, to the path and ride around town and take the Thompson lily pads and all that sort of stuff, and it's a really cool thing to do. And so what I like is the word, in other words, rather than telling people, don't drive your car, you say, let's try walking more. In other words, that sounds better than telling them what to not do. It tells, there are potential to ride your bike and, and walk more than you'd, if you look around for it.
And not everybody's going to do it, no.
No.
But if you can get some people to do it, and, I mean, I don't walk much because this knee is bone-on-bone. I don't walk, I'm sorry. And this one's already been replaced because it was bone-on-bone.
We're going to give you a special pyramid.
Yeah, but, you know, there are a lot of people like that. And, and I also am used to driving. And, but I think there are a lot of people, and there's a lot of change. People are riding more, they're walking more, and like you said, turn around, go the other way, you can get where you want to go.
Maybe a question to put in here under the second one would be something to include options for more, wider streets for biking, more sidewalks, walking paths.
Separated bike, you know, walking.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's an actionable thing that people can give an opinion on that can be incorporated into the things we do here. I look at the, I really like that second question. I like, I like the choices it presents, and I like the way it presents it. The middle two, I think those could be combined into one. They, they talk about smaller yards, and one's about work, and one's about schools, stores and restaurants. I think those could be combined, and maybe you could stick something, or, I think this is a question where we could put some of the things that are, are practical with the comparison kind of things. Maybe you could stick something in there with it, again, with a more biking, walking, or ways to facilitate that.
And we can.
Better bike lanes, or whatever that would be.
The one, one reason to, for the purpose of comparison to national results, it'd be helpful to keep the wording consistent.
Okay.
In those, but we could certainly add another one that doesn't have a comparable. We can ask, like you said, that one that talks about access or proximity to bike and pedestrian facilities, you know, or a neighborhood that doesn't have those facilities, how important are those to them? And it needs to be kind of in some sort of kind of trade-off context, so that there's a, you have to be, you have to be weighing something, that there's a cost to get something, and you're giving up something else in it. So we could certainly look at adding another one that really speaks to bike and pedestrian facilities and their integration of proximity within a neighborhood. And even sometimes it's about terrain, depending where you live. My folks live over on Conestoga at the bottom of the dip, and that's an area that's isolated from town, and biking would just be a nightmare.
Boy, you'd have a set of thighs, bro.
But, you know, my house is a pretty, you know, two little small hills, and it's pretty easy ride, so, you know, it's, that can have a big influence on, on what people would choose. Okay, well, why don't we maybe say, well, the second question's good, we'll add something about bike and pedestrian facilities, I'll work on that.
I like number three, as the consolidation of the one, you know, it's, gets you everything that the number four one does, pretty much, gets the idea.
So would be good with those two? So the, the neighborhood characteristics and the need for retiree senior housing?
I guess I would like to modify, well, modify it to include a bigger population than just retirees and senior, more housing choices for people with disabilities and retiree senior housing, but also sort of young professionals.
Something like, like different ages and stages of life.
Yeah, yeah, life resp, yeah, I like that, something like that.
You have to have some specificity, something to say, yes, and we don't know what that means.
Yeah, I got you, yeah, yeah.
What, what is, you know, what does that mean? So if you're looking.
For more housing choices that support senior, seniors, people with disabilities, and specific population groups such as seniors, people with disabilities, and.
Youth.
Young professionals, yeah, yeah, younger people who can't afford a single family house.
One of the things we haven't talked about is that the generation that is coming up now is going to be the first generation since, well, even before World War II, that are not going to be as well-off and as financially successful as their parents.
I think we're that, aren't we?
Well, for sure.
No, no, I'm just kidding, but I'm not kidding, actually.
And so that is going to bring in, just, I think by definition, smaller houses, smaller yards.
The other thing I just read the other day was a prediction, I guess would you'd call it, that, that that generation, that early twenties, late teens, they are less attached to place and to any particular job and to any particular kind of income that they're going to make, that they are more likely to pick up and go and just do what they think is going to be a fun thing to do.
Until you're about 45.
Well, I think it's because they may have seen that hard work doesn't necessarily get you anywhere.
I like what you're getting at there, Wendy, about, you know, the disability and different housing for different groups of people. But I'd like to see it asked as individual questions, rather than-
Oh, gotcha, okay.
-clumping it all together. Like, let's find out if there's a demand for senior housing with this question. Then next time, let's ask a question about, you know, find out something about that particular group-
Right, right.
-and then ask the question about, do we need more housing for people with disabilities? As a separate question.
Can, can you cheat, like you did with this last one, and ask, ask all these questions in one?
We, we probably could. We, we could.
So they're, so they're asking, ask three separate questions, but they look like one, like this here?
Bold heading at the top and a bunch of questions.
Yes.
What's you gonna do there?
I mean, we have a lot, we have all these social services in town, like inclusion, et cetera. And quite honestly, as a parent of a son who was living with us with disabilities, there really aren't a lot of housing options for people outside of group homes, which, you know, I mean, that, you know, and that requires closer in-walkable access for people who can't drive or can't do this or that. And so that's why I was thinking it might, I would like to see it in a dropdown, kind of like you're suggesting, where we have different populations that we're targeting for housing. Yeah.
Yeah.
And-
We learn more about something that's actionable that way, you know?
Right, right.
Right.
Do we need, is this a group of people that we need to target as a-
Right. And then what would their land use needs be?
Right. How can we facilitate that, because there's a need for it?
Okay, so I, I can see the second question with some bike, pet facility addition, and then modifying the last one to really be talking about different housing needs of different populations. Identify seniors, disabled, um-
And young, young, um-
Young families.
Young fam, yeah, young families, sort of low-income young families. Well, not, I don't know if it would be, I mean, low-income exactly, but they are, pretty much.
Then I'll work on those two and bring them back on the tenth.
All right. So are we, where are we on these? That took us a whole hour. Okay. Do I hear a motion for adjournment, or any other time? Deb, second? Hi, yeah.
Second.
All in three?
All right.
All right. So I have to tell Nels, sorry.